Second, it's six o'clock. We'd like to begin this work session. We begin all our work sessions with public comment and we're going to have a public comment period to begin our meeting, then we'll have another at the end of our meeting. Those that are making public comments are limited to three minutes. And our city clerk has a couple of people that have asked to speak, so we'll have her introduce those and then we'll ask for others that want to make public comment. City clerk.
Victoria Rasmussen Dixon.
Welcome, Victoria.
Welcome. Good evening. First of all, thank you to all of you guys, Honorable Mayor and the council members, for letting me come in here and speak this evening. I'm Victoria Rasmussen Dixon, writing candidate for Laramie City Council Ward Three, and I'm here this evening to discuss Resolution 2020-43. In this resolution, there are five different items in which you passed as a whole. On July 2nd, there was a press release put on Facebook stating that the Hollyhock Commons construction was to begin on July 6, 2020. When I saw this press release, I immediately called one of the members of council to discuss it with them. Their response was that they had no idea what I was talking about and that they had never heard of it. They next told me that I needed to call Assistant City Manager Todd Fieser because he was the one in charge. I also went around to several downtown businesses. I then spoke to the owners of those multiple businesses and asked if they had known about it. Not a one of them had known about it. They knew nothing about this. I then called Todd Fieser and asked if this item would be on the agenda, and at that point, it was not planned to be on the agenda. I had requested that the construction please be stopped and to please bring this item to the council so that we, the public, could discuss it with the council and could let our feelings be known on it. By the time it came around to the council, the picnic benches had already been purchased and built. The AstroTurf had already been ordered and ready to be laid down, and the whole project had already been paid for. So my questions to you, the council, is first, why were these items in this resolution not broke down and voted on individually? How is it that an item so large that will impact the downtown so much had never been heard of by multiple downtown businesses, business owners, or anyone? Or even given a chance to discuss it with them? Why were the tables already built for the specific purpose and that only a few select people made this decision? That they thought it would be without talking to the businesses and instead of being discussed as a whole? And how was the funding approved to spend on this item before it came before the council? Lastly, and most importantly, how is the council going to handle items like this in the future? When the city employees have already spent the funds or have executed plans before getting prior approval? What sort of recourse will there be? The city council is elected by the people to safeguard our city, our rights, and our taxpayer funds. Although the city plays an essential role in achieving these objectives, they should not have free rein and should be accountable to the city council just as the council is to the people of the city. I hope that the council will take their obligations to oversee and guide the city staff more seriously in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. City clerk?
Jessica Nada. I'm going to keep my face covering on while I make this comment. If you want to start the time. My name is Jessica Nada. I'm currently at 420 South 22nd Street. I want to thank the council and mayor of the city of Laramie for having me be able to make this public comment tonight. I just want to tell you one thing. I did want to talk a little bit about what's taking place with the Laramie Police Department. But I'm going to bypass that tonight. If a beaver goes to La Perle Park and believes that it should cut down a tree to bring back some of the riparian wetlands that this city used to have, your best response would be to allow that beaver to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, there's no one else I see on the list, but I'm going to open it up. First of all, to those in the council chambers, anyone that would like to make public comments? That's present in the council chambers. Okay, we'll go to those who have zoomed in on this meeting. If there's anyone who indicates that they'd be wanting to speak during the public comments, please unmute by hitting star six and we'll recognize you.
Christopher Stratton.
Christopher, welcome. Go ahead.
Christopher, if you could unmute yourself again. I'm sorry, I hit mute again.
There you go.
Okay, that better. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council for allowing me to do public comment. I just want to bring to attention yet again, you know, since the opening of the University of Wyoming and the continued travel of businesses such as the bars, et cetera, and town, we are now considered a hotspot for COVID, and we seem to be going up day by day. I would love to see some action done by the city council in regards to this situation. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Christopher.
Billy Harris.
Billy, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, President Seidel, and President Talamontes for the opportunity to speak. My name is Billy Harris, and I'm a resident of Laramie and alumnus of the University of Wyoming. In the midst of a state budgetary crisis where the University of Wyoming is faced with an initial budget reduction of $42.3 million, the financial detriment to faculty, staff, students, and the Laramie community cannot be taken lightly. Everyone, students and non-students, will feel the impact of this financial crisis, and it is only exacerbated by the increasing risk of COVID as more students come back to town. It is difficult to depend on the maintenance of a virus on a campus that has in-person classes with masks required in a city that allows for restaurants and bars to operate at near full capacity without face masks required. Beyond the COVID risk, but in line with its detrimental financial impact, I think it's imperative to consider how the university can effectively address the recession without entirely sacrificing educational programs and student programming. As continued cuts hit the state and your institution, you must self-reflect on not only where funding is wastefully used, but aspects of the university utilized in the city that are no longer needed. Coupled with UW's desperate need of funding to stay afloat and serve its students, as protests and advocacy against overpolicing continue across the nation and Laramie, the university has the opportunity to save nearly $2 million per year by dissolving the UW Police Department. Rather than essential staff and faculty terminations and diminishing grants or aid payments, the dissolution of UW PD would help aid a community that feels overpoliced while allotting a large sum of money that's going to a department that only brings you about $7,000 per year. Staff, faculty, and students bring more money and acclaim to the university and city, while the set of law enforcement officers and administrators at UW PD are wastefully used assisting the already existing police departments in our city, county, and state. If this budget aims to maintain UW PD at its current capacity and ability, I urge you to prove to the community its $2 million value or that it is contributing valued prevention or education regarding underage drinking, which compromises over 75% of its yearly responses. The purpose of the University of Wyoming and the city of Laramie is immense, and that purpose lies in its faculty, staff, and students. The upcoming budget cuts are unfortunate and dreaded, but there is wasted funding in the existence of the UW Police Department, and its dissolution can prove valuable in finding needed funding during the COVID crisis as well as addressing overpolicing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Mayor, if you'd want to ask one more time, Mayor.
Okay, we're still in the public comment period. If there's anyone that's on the Zoom call that would like to speak, unmute and go ahead and we'll recognize you. City clerk, you probably want to stop the clock.
Mayor, I see no one else unmuting.
Okay, there will be another public comment period at the end of our work session, so at this time, we'll close the public comment session at the beginning of our work session, and now we're going to go into the work session itself. First of all, I want to thank President Seidel and those that are here from the University of Wyoming. We appreciate the close relationship that we have, the working relationship we have with them. Appreciate how they have kept us up to date on changes and how they're dealing with various issues. I guess I'd ask our city manager, do we have anyone that's going to introduce them? Are you going to be introducing our president?
That was my intention, if you'd like, council.
I'd love to. Okay, go ahead.
Very good, thank you. I don't really have much to say except to introduce the University of Wyoming president, Ed Seidel, and welcome him to the community. We'll also mention for council's edification that following President Seidel's presentation, we do have ASUW president Riley Talamontes. She'll be presenting to you by Zoom. We do, at least once per year as a city, invite the university to come and share an update about activities on the campus in efforts to further strengthen our town and gown partnership. So this is typically annual event. Sometimes we will invite them in the spring as well. So with that, I would welcome President Seidel.
Thank you, and again, welcome, President. Thank you. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. So I'm Ed Seidel. I'm honored to be taking this role on as the university president, and I'm very excited in spite of the fact that we're all here wearing masks and we're in situations that none of us planned for. Certainly, I didn't plan on taking on a university presidency in this environment, but I will tell you that our team is absolutely dedicated to doing the best we can to get through this in partnership with the city and of course with the state as well. I'd like to also just make sure that my team has introduced Mary Ivanoff, Chief of Staff, and Alex Keen, who's handling government relations, and so they're a very important part of our team. Well, let me start by saying just a few words about myself so you kind of understand what my instincts are and where I come from. So I'm trained as a scientist. I'm a physicist by training. I'm going to be giving some public lectures, I hope, on things like black holes, which I find personally very fascinating. I think you all will too if I have an opportunity to give you a talk about that. But over the last years, I've been doing work in, among other things, at the University of Illinois in the last six years. I was the director of a thing called the National Center for Supercomputing Applications. So I have a science and technology background, and I think a lot about economic development out of that venue of high-performance computing and corporate partnerships and so on. And then for four years after that, before coming here, about four and a half years nearly, I was the Vice President for Economic Development for the University of Illinois system. And in that role, I spent all of my time thinking about how the university, and this is the university system, so that involved Champaign-Urbana, University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign, as well as University of Illinois in Chicago, as well as the University of Illinois in Springfield. Three very different institutions. To think about how that system could advance the communities that we lived in economically as well as the state as a whole. And in doing so, I spent time in many different communities across the state. And you might think of the state of Illinois as being roughly a very, very rural state that is full of corn and soybean fields. About 75% of the state's economy is driven by agriculture, with Chicago just plopped down in the top of the state. And so they're completely different kinds of communities, but I spent a lot of my time thinking about how to connect Chicago and the institutions in Chicago with all other parts of the state, including in the very southern, very, very rural parts of the state. That goes all the way down to St. Louis. And in doing that, I developed partnerships with all of the public universities, including Southern Illinois University, Northern Illinois, I won't go through all of them, 12 public universities, including three from the University of Illinois, to think about building hubs of innovation around each one of those communities that then helped drive economic development within the whole state, but at a community-based level. And so here, we've already had only one conversation about what we might do together in Laramie, but I have a lot of interest in seeing what the university can do to help spur economic growth and development, not only in the city, but then in partnership with the community colleges across the entire state. I've had phone calls with all 12 community colleges, or I'm sorry, all seven community colleges, and in addition, many conversations with community members about what we might do. And I think about it in two ways. One is supporting the existing economies of the state, which I would say are perhaps broadly speaking in agriculture, in energy, in tourism, in mining and extraction, industries like that. And then to think about the new economy of the state that I think as our responsibility as a land-grant institution, we focus most of our time on educating the next generation of the citizens of the state. So we want to give them the skills and the values. So when they graduate and leave, they want to stay in the state, and they want to help advance the state in various ways. So thinking about the future, the new economy of the state, I think you'll see over time additional focus of the university in areas around entrepreneurship to give kids the skills they need, whether they're an English major or a civil engineer or an energy specialist and someone coming out of the Ag school, to have the skills and the sort of instincts on what it takes to be entrepreneurial, to help potentially start a company, to think about the skills that are needed to advance the economy, or perhaps to think about computing and big data and areas about software development and so on. And this is, of course, the 21st century. So thinking about the 21st century version of the land-grant mission, how do we advance that? So this is a long-term view, and I have a long-term plan to be here in Wyoming and in Laramie and looking forward to working with you to plan together how we can advance the economy of the state. So I'm happy to get into some details about that, but just wanted you to know that that is my training and those are my instincts, particularly in the last few years. So let me tell you, I was asked to give a few specific kinds of updates, and then I hope there's time for discussion. So the first thing I would say is around the vision of the university. And we're spending now a lot of time, in fact, we spent four hours today with our team, with all the vice presidents and other senior staff in a team-building exercise just amongst ourselves, since a lot of changes have occurred, to think about how we work together. And we talked some about the vision, and I hinted at this, but I would say that I have four pillars of focus going forward. And that doesn't mean we won't do many other things, but of course, the university, as I said, wants to focus its attention on advancing the state. So the four pillars that I have for this are that the university should become more entrepreneurial. And I mean this in two senses. One is having faculty and staff more able to raise additional revenue streams. For example, around grant support or philanthropic foundations or corporate partnerships. This is another area that I spent a lot of time on, not just in Illinois, but in earlier parts of my career, thinking about corporate partnerships that can also raise revenue and think about giving students good opportunities through internships and so on. So more entrepreneurial, also in the sense of having training for entrepreneurship. And we are unveiling an entrepreneurship minor that's available to students in any major so that no matter what your major is, you'll have those skills that I mentioned before. So this is pillar number one. A second pillar is more computational, more digital. And by that, I mean the students and programs we have will be focused increasingly in the future to have a digital component. More emphasis on data, on artificial intelligence, on computational science, also in partnership with NCAR, NCAR Wyoming, which is in Cheyenne. And by the way, just a side note, about 15 years ago, when I was actually in Louisiana, I was at Louisiana State University, I was asked by the National Science Foundation to chair a committee to make recommendations on what the future of NCAR's computing facility should be, and our recommendation was it should be in Wyoming. So just, you know, 15 years later, by coincidence, here I am. And so I think I know how we can build that partnership even better, so very interested in doing that. So you will see more things around computation, more online courses, more ability to reach out into rural communities of the state to provide the education that people need. The third area is more interdisciplinary. And there, I have lived my entire career understanding that the science or the research or whatever I do requires a lot of help from people with expertise in other areas. And so the university has expertise in virtually every aspect, whether it's legal, computational, engineering, science, literature, social condition, et cetera. We have expertise in that. So finding ways to focus that on problems that the state has and that our communities have, that's very important to me. So we will be looking at ways to combine programs so that we can focus our value back to the state. And the final and fourth pillar is around more inclusion. And I mean that very, very broadly. So inclusion in the sense of welcoming people from all walks of life, from all income brackets, from all disciplines, all geographic parts of the state, across the country, and in fact, around the world. We have a very international student body, and in fact, a lot of our students, even in spite of COVID-19, I've been meeting with a number of the students, and I would say virtually all of them have told me how much they appreciate the fact that they have opportunities for study abroad or to meet with people from different parts of the world, and it really broadens their horizons. So when I say inclusion, I mean people from every dimension of diversity and making sure that they feel welcome there. So that is in effect the vision that I have. Then happy to talk to you, and of course, I look forward to many discussions going forward on how we can build the economic future of this community in particular. So let me just switch gears there and talk just for a couple of minutes about both enrollment and about athletics. And then if you'd like, I could either stop there and have some discussion or questions, or I can move on to the COVID-19 update. But let me just briefly tell you about the enrollment situation. So when I first arrived on July the 1st, it began to look a little scary, the decline in the projected enrollments because of COVID-19. So when we polled our students and their families about why they were perhaps thinking about sitting this year out, it was generally, almost, I wouldn't say exclusively, but largely described in terms of economic conditions. Difficult for students to afford to come to college or to afford their housing or whatever the cost of college, they were having difficulties with that. So we worked very hard with the state legislature, Speaker Harshman in particular, and a number of other legislators, and with Governor Gordon. And that culminated in money that's $20 million, perhaps up to $25 million, to cover the student living expenses. And so every student who has a demonstrated need for financial assistance because of COVID-19 reasons can get, I think it's $3,250, in support for the housing and food. So in fact, we've had, I think, to date, almost $22 million of requests. And as a result of that, in a very aggressive recruiting campaign to sort of get our students back, we even had a sort of a statewide town hall meeting with Governor Gordon where we really promoted the importance of college education. We ended up being down about 3.4%, which is a big improvement from the earlier projections. So I think, you know, thanks to those partnerships, that really made a big difference. In time, I would like to see the community of the student body grow, and I think that there's also good opportunity for that over time. In particular, something like over 90% of students here have a high school diploma, but only about 25% of the state's population has a bachelor's degree. And so I think that there's room to grow. I don't want to become a massive state university because I think we have a very special environment, very intimate kind of environment. So we don't want to lose that, but I think we can grow somewhat. And as a result of that, I would look forward in the next years to growth at both the graduate and the undergraduate level. So the last thing I'll say on this section here is about athletics. We have, of course, a very heartbreaking decision by the Mountain West Conference, and I was part of that decision, to postpone the athletics program. Of course, we're one of many conferences nationwide that postponed our athletics programs, including the Big Ten that I came from. And many people maybe haven't appreciated how much I love sports. I'm a real, I'm a sports person. I'm an avid skier and a hiker, and I've already got a season pass to Snowy Mountain Range Ski Area. I can't wait until we can get out there. And I was at LSU, where the first year I was there, we won the national championship. And I can tell you what an incredible experience that was and then how, in fact, the chancellor of LSU at that time was Mark Emmert, who's now the head of the NCAA. And so I know Mark pretty well, and I've had a number of conversations with him. So the last thing a university president wants to do, and particularly when there's such a strong program in a state like this, is to take this decision. And of course, it was a collective decision of the Mountain West. So since that happened, and I'll say that it was unanimous among the medical advisors to the presidents that it was not, there wasn't a safe path that was clear at that time, and largely because there wasn't enough testing technology in place to make sure that the student athletes would be safe if they were playing, particularly football, because it's so strenuous. And that's changed dramatically. In the last couple of months, testing technology has advanced to the point where it's much cheaper, much more scalable. New technologies, Abbott in particular has a new testing device. So we are now looking very, very hard at trying to restart our sports season, or maybe start is the right word, not restart, but also a bit inspired by what the Big Ten just decided a couple of weeks ago. So I don't have any announcements yet, of course, but I've been on the phone a lot with the other presidents of the Mountain West. So I would just say there's a strong note of optimism that we might be able to get back. And I know how important that is for the state. In fact, I remember even preparing for my interview here, there's something like a $17 million impact from the athletics program on this local community on an annual basis. And so I think that's a very, very important economic development aspect as well. So we want to come back, and we're working very hard on it. And so stay tuned for that, but I just wanted to tell you that there's some progress there. So should I keep going here, or would you like me to just stop and see if there are any comments? I can move to COVID next, if you'd like.
President, we have, your time here is certainly yours. We have time to hear that. It's something that we're all interested in, and you've been very active in that. I know it's consumed a great deal of your time. So without objection from the council, I'd like to ask you to give us at least a brief update on the COVID situation at the university because that impacts not only the university, but also the city and the state. So appreciate whatever wisdom you have to bring to us on that.
Well, thanks. Thank you. I will continue then and update you on COVID. So maybe just to review briefly the situation. So when I came, of course, from the University of Illinois, that it turns out has been, I would say, pioneering testing capabilities. And in fact, they are currently carrying out about 15,000 to 20,000 tests per day in Urbana-Champaign, not just only for the university community there, but for the community at large in the state. And so in fact, some of that testing program was developed by my office when I was there. So I was very, very familiar with advances in the testing technology that were being developed there. So when I came here on July the 1st, we did have, I'd say, a more aggressive program for testing than most universities. Every student coming back had to be tested and had to be negative in order to just to join the community, or if they were positive, then they had to go into isolation. And I frankly didn't think that was enough because with a test, you know, on your way here, you could meet someone in a restaurant and pick up COVID-19 and then create an outbreak. So I want to be very careful about that. So we decided to ramp up a very aggressive testing program so that we could test the majority of our campus on a regular basis. And our plans are to implement, not yet completed, to implement what we call surveillance testing so that every student can be tested at least once or hopefully twice per week. That would be sort of the gold standard if you can do that. And to do it cheaply, these typically are over $100 a test. That's a very expensive proposition, but the new technologies are allowing us to do it much less for about $10 a test, or something of that order. So anyway, we have a plan to grow our testing capabilities, and they're not fully implemented yet. So when we realized that we couldn't implement that entire testing regime, we decided to go into a phased-in approach, that we couldn't do it on time for the August 24th opening. So we created this phased-in approach where we had, in phase one from August 24th, when classes started, classes would be online only initially, and then students who were already on campus would be accommodated. But then we would test people with this vault testing program where we have to actually mail the samples off to a laboratory in Florida, and then we get the results back a few days later. Again, many things can happen in a few days. So that testing program was put in place. And then within about two weeks, I forget the exact date, but it's down here. You all may remember the date, but just a few weeks ago, we had a number- may remember the date, but just a few weeks ago, we had a number of tests positive, also with students who were symptomatic, meaning they weren't just positive, but they were also sick. And that's a problem, because if you recognize that you're sick and you come in and you're a student, and then you test positive, that means for some days before you noticed you were sick, you were also infectious. And so that means, and only about 25% of students in that age group, of undergraduate students who were, who get the disease, actually show symptoms. So that means there's four times as many out there, roughly. So if you detect five symptomatic, you may have 20. Within two days, you may have 100, and then you can have a big outbreak. So we had a trigger that said, if we have those five, we will go into a pause, and we hit that. So we went into what we called the pause, which meant for five days, we did not, we encouraged everyone to be socially, not only socially distanced, but to isolate and not to have any in-person classes. There were a small number of in-person classes, even though it was mostly online. We didn't have enough data after five days. So it took a while for the test to come back, so I had to extend the pause for a few days. I just wanted people to understand, there's very, very, very deep discussions. We have over 200 people that are working on everything from testing to accommodating students who maybe have been, have to be brought in, moved into their dormitories, and so on. So a lot of staff members. And so we finally decided that it was, after all the data came in, we want this to be strongly science-driven, that it was safe, at least within tolerable risk, as we define it. So there's always risk. People will have COVID-19, and we want to make sure that we manage that risk. So we decided to reopen, and we're currently reopened, except we had another incident in the law school. And so what, I took, the fact that we have improved understanding of how to manage this, we talk a lot with our colleagues at other universities, really a lot of colleagues at many different universities, from Colorado State to the University of Illinois, to the University of Maine, and many others that we consult with regularly. And we decided that we were able to have a more flexible framework for making decisions. We added more staff to help manage the situation. And now we're in a situation where it's more nimble, where if something happens, we can take a more targeted approach, not just shut down the university, but think about exactly where we have a problem, and then what we should do. And so coming back to the law school, the law school had an outbreak of something like seven students, maybe six, six or seven students. And so this week in particular, we have isolated the students in the law school, but without having to impact the rest of the university. So this is our plan going forward, to be more targeted in the interventions that we take. So our hope is, and is a strong hope, that we will be able to keep the university open and keep our students in person, in class, because that we think is the best way. And we actually would like to talk with you about things we might do together to help manage the spread within the town. And so I get lots and lots of emails from people. Some from parents who are concerned about their children, and I've spoken to many of the parents. Some that are not at all concerned, thinking this is no more than a cold. I can assure, I think you all know you're wearing masks. This is potentially much more serious than a cold. And then some from the town who are concerned that we have students bringing coronavirus into our wonderful community here, and I'm very sensitive to that. So I think that there may be some things we could do together to help manage the situation. We want, for example, the restaurants and bars to be open. I frequent particularly restaurants for takeaway and for where it's possible to eat outside. I really try to support the community in doing that. There are things we might do. For example, I know in Champagne, the local bars have agreed to look and see, do the students have on their app, and we have a similar app on a phone that says, you are cleared to come on campus, maybe to look at that and say, come into our restaurant or to our bar. I mean, there are things like this that we might have discussions around. So I'd love to have some ideas about this. But currently, I think we're managing the situation relatively well, and we've done about 20, 23, 24,000 tests by now of the community, and we're trying to ramp that up more. The last thing I wanted to say, that was on my agenda here, that you asked me about, was the budget situation. Another situation that wasn't part of the interview was, how would you cut $42 million out of the budget? And I must say, that's hard, because we've already gone through a 40-some million-dollar budget reduction just a few years ago. And so on top of that, it won't be easy. We're having daily meetings. We have, again, many committees at the university that are looking at this. And my basic instructions to the university have been those four pillars that I talked about, that I think will help us bring back as much value as possible to the community and to the state around economic development, or around civic engagement, around making sure students are really ready to hit the ground running when they leave the university and back into the community, that we strengthen, or at least maintain, or try to strengthen those activities, and try to cut things that don't contribute as much to that. But that doesn't mean, as some have assumed, that I would say, well, for example, arts, we don't support. So of course, we have a vibrant arts and humanities scene here, and social sciences, and those are absolutely vital for the university, for the community. And to think about, for example, where innovation comes from, it comes from the clash of different ideas, particularly a lot of the creativity in the arts and humanities. So I want to find ways to connect that to, in this interdisciplinary push to the rest of the university. And think about growing the creative economy, for example, in the city of Laramie. There are a lot of conversation we can have about things to do there. So I'll just say, we're working very hard on that. We have a plan that was approved by the Board of Trustees last week to, well, a directive from the Board of Trustees to me, to have a plan that they would then consider to approve or not on the board meeting in early November. So we have 45 days from last Thursday to produce that plan, and we're working very hard on that. So maybe I'll just pause there. I know I went in for a long time, but I have a, maybe just conclude, there's a lot of sort of unpleasant news and all of that, but I'm just, I'm as excited as I could be about the future of the university and the state and living here in Laramie. And I just really, I feel very welcome here, and I expect to be here for a long time, and I look forward to getting to know you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, President. You mentioned that you want to keep the dialogue open between the city and the university. I have appreciated hearing from you through Alex Keen to invite us to come in for those discussions. I look forward to those in the future. Your ideas that you brought up, we certainly will work together with you so that we can do the very best thing that we can for the university and for the community. Thank you for offering to have us have this discussion. So I'm going to start off by asking the city council if there's any questions that anyone would like to bring forward for you, and that's okay for you to have us ask questions.
Oh, please, I want to have dialogue.
We'll try to respect your time and then also leave time for the ASUW president. But if you, we'll just go and see how this goes, and then I don't want to hold you long. I know you're a busy person, but I want to make sure that we can at least ask the questions that come from the council. First of all, we have Councilor Doherty that's going to ask you a question.
Thank you for coming, Dr. Seidel. I'm glad you brought up the thing about being a scientist, because I appreciate that, and it's one of the things that we do really well here. And I was wondering, has the university considered creating a lab on campus to do the testing? I think University of Idaho has done that. And sure, we have enough smart people and...
Yeah, indeed. Our VetMet lab is gearing up specifically for this in-house testing. It would be a saliva-based test. In fact, the director of the VetMet lab was at once at the VetMet lab at the University of Illinois, where they are also doing their testing. So there's a very deep back channel of conversation going there. So that is where our in-house testing will be carried on.
That's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. President Seidel, thank you for coming. This is a tough situation for you. I remember when former President Nichols was starting her job, the first thing she had to do was make that large budget cut. And now you have all these ideas, I'm sure, bright visions for the university. You're faced with a similar situation. You've touched on it a little bit. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, now you're also dealing with COVID. And from your standpoint, you know, how do you imagine tackling all these negatives as you're just getting started?
Well, there's some kind of a Chinese proverb about, there's an opportunity in every crisis. I don't know exactly the proverb, but it's something like that. And of course, it's not a pleasant exercise to deal with COVID-19, nor budget cuts that come from it, nor other issues of the athletics program. Many, many things have been impacted by this that have been very difficult. But there are things that are coming out of it that I think are positive. And so, for example, our own team, which has gone through, today in our team-building exercise, we've pointed out multiple times, we've had, is it six presidents in seven years, or it's not seven presidents in six years? I think it's, anyway, it's a lot of presidents in a short number of years. And so that's created some turmoil in the senior team. And so I must say, people have really, really come together by this crisis. And so we're talking a lot, I think the team is working more effectively, and so, you know, that's sort of an organizational issue, but I think we'll be working more on that to become a more effective organization. And likewise, with the budget crisis that we have, again, I won't say that it makes us stronger to go through a $42 million budget cut, but it does make us look at things and make hard decisions that you just wouldn't make otherwise. And so I'm trying to make sure that we are as strategic as possible when we make those. And so it does, in some sense, give me a leg up to say, okay, well, there's a new vision, and we can reorganize ourselves as we make cuts, and we're going to move in this direction. And so I think that's much better than saying, let's just cut everything by 10%, or God forbid, 20%, if we had to get to that point. That would be really devastating. So we're going to do this in a very strategic way, and I think people are really on board with that. So my hope is that we go through a decline, and then we build back over time with lots of things, from philanthropic investments to corporate partnerships, to hopefully some state investments for things that the state will see as being very important to the future. And we'll be working on that. So this, in a sense, gives you an opportunity to make those hard decisions that would be much harder otherwise.
Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. President Seidel, thank you, first of all, for joining us this evening. This has already proved to be a pretty great conversation. Given your sort of expertise in economic development, maybe you're familiar with this, maybe you're not, you've certainly had a busy start to the job here. But in the early parts of this year, we adopted a 10-year economic development plan that had a considerable amount of university influence, as we sort of navigated through the creation of that. And I would be curious to know, I'm expecting that you have not read it, and that is totally understandable, but at some point, when you have a minute to come up to breathe, I think it would be helpful to bring your ideas into that conversation as well. It certainly doesn't contemplate a pandemic or a drop in, you know, state extractive revenues. So I think it might be beneficial for us to begin alongside your administration as well with this new plan. So I think it would be helpful, if you're willing, to have you get involved in that plan now, before we really start moving. And I'm hoping you'll be interested in that.
I, thank you very much. I'm extremely interested in doing that. In fact, in preparing for coming here, I indeed dug up, I think it was this plan on the internet. I searched very hard for what kinds of economic development plans there would be in place. I also worked with the city, well, there are three cities of Champagne, Urbana, and Savoy. And so they range in size from a little smaller to Laramie, to a little bit bigger than Laramie, but they work together as a community. And I worked with them. We have a research park in Champagne, actually Champagne and Urbana, that is associated with the university. There's also an incubator there for, so the research park is where many corporate partners are located, because they want access to our students and our faculty. That's had billions of dollars of impact, I mean, literally billions of dollars of impact on that community over a 15-year period. So it's not, you know, per year. But it's a university that's three times the size of this university. So I think over time, we could develop similar kinds of things, but we have to plan this together. There's also been an incubator and a venture capital fund that all reported to me when I was the vice president for economic development there. And so, and the development of those activities required, not just required, but, you know, was delightful in having conversations with the local city councils and the mayor and so on. So I'm eager to have this conversation.
I'm really excited to hear that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harrington. Counselor Pierce?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, Janine, maybe you can help me out here, but have you been invited to Cirrus Sky yet? I think, you know, at some point in the future, maybe getting up there and seeing what we have going on up there in terms of potential economic development would be great.
I've heard of it. We've discussed it a little bit, so I've read some materials on it. And is it just up to the north? Yeah, so I've actually driven around and saying, hmm, I'm going to have to get in there sometime. So I'm really interested in doing this.
The university owns a chunk of that property up there, so there might be some real opportunity, you know, down the road, obviously, but I think that'd be good.
Thank you. I really look forward to doing that.
Counselor Stalder?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm in your blind spot over here.
I'm looking up at the screen and hard, I'll keep checking. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming and explaining kind of your vision for the future. I have a city-specific question about the relationship between the university and the city, which is so important for the local economy. And I'm not sure I have the terminology right, but there was like a power plant, a flameless power plant, I believe, that was going to be built at the university. And I hear that that is now going to be built in Gillette. And I was just wondering if you could speak to that at all? And what could the city do to incentivize that kind of growth?
Well, so I'm aware of that. I'm not aware of the specific technical details. There is a power plant up outside of Gillette, where there's a very specific, very good match technically on what we might do. So I know that there were technical reasons for preferring that location, but frankly, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this, so I don't have the details, but I'm aware of it. But I would say going forward, we're all about, of course, investments in our backyard and things we can do together. And so, you know, to the last conversation as well, thinking about, if, so for example, if we were able to build a school of computing, or explore, building on the activities that we have right now with the School of Energy Resources, where that project lies, looking to work with you and the council and local businesses, or Cirrus Sky, is it? Yes. To think about what the opportunities are, I mean, we should just be having those conversations all the time. And so, of course, we do have a vice president for research and economic development, Ed Sinikowski, who's been here a little longer than I have, but perhaps only for three years. So there's an activity that I want to grow. And so there's just, there's no question that I want to grow. This has been my training for years, actually. I stopped at Illinois, but a few stops before that, I was also doing this in other environments. And so I really wanted to have these conversations.
Can I ask one more?
Go ahead, Counselor Stalder.
You mentioned the National Center for Supercomputing, and there was a supercomputer center that's now in Cheyenne, that I understand they were looking at Laramie for a development site. And I wonder if you could just give us some insight about what would make Laramie, you know, a better match for some of these high-dollar things that would impact our economy?
Well, sure. So I was, I was the director of that center, and then very early in my career, I was a postdoc there, starting in 1989. And I can tell you that that was funded by federal money from the National Science Foundation. And in fact, I was even part of a team that did propose what ended up being a $500 million project from the National Science Foundation, and it was successful. And it's had over $1 billion in impact on the local economy. That does another, another sort of billion-dollar impact on the economy. But then even more, I focused a lot on growing a corporate partnership program through NCSA, it's now National Center for Supercomputing Applications, where the expertise of the students and staff and postdocs, and then the computational capacity of the computer itself, which were extraordinary, could be used to grow these partnerships that would bring companies in. And in fact, actually, there's a really good story there, which was in around the early 1985 period, when NCSA was first founded, Caterpillar became a corporate partner. And Caterpillar found that so valuable that they started, they said, we want to have a whole office here by the university. So that started the research park that now has 120 companies in it. So these things take a while to develop. But so I'm going to be thinking about those things a lot, and in particular with the N-Car Wyoming supercomputing facility, I think that there is a lot of potential there for growth. And since I was also at the National Science Foundation, so I know how it works, and I know, I know the director actually pretty well. And so I'm going to be having conversations about how to potentially expand the mission of that, to be focused more on economic development. And of course, there's, you know, the university is, can partner with, say, Laramie County Community College, and I've already had conversation with Joe Schaefer about that, sort of things we can do there. we can do there and the things we can do here, too. So, just a long answer to say that there's a lot of potential there, and I'm thinking about that a lot, but I need to be talking with you all about how to get the ground truth in any ideas we have.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? President Seidel, do you want to take some, a few questions from the public?
Sure.
If there's questions coming from them? And then, then we'll, if it's okay with you, we'll have maybe some comments from the council and then we'll go, then we'll go to the ASUW president.
Sounds great.
Becky, anyone in the public that has a question for President Seidel?
Hi, I'd like to make a comment.
If you could give us your name, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Sam Newman. I come to you as a concerned Laramie resident and current UW student. President Seidel, since I, along with thousands of other students, are responsible for paying your salary, I'm going to ask you a few questions that you would be foolish to ignore. Ed, is it really safe to be sending students charged in your care back to in-person classes amid a global pandemic, especially considering the cases in our county? Skyrocketed to the point that we are classified by America's COVID warning system to be in the midst of an uncontrollable outbreak. Ed, do you think that it's remotely possible for the, remotely possible for the children and young adults charged in your care to be socially distant in their dorm rooms when they share bathrooms with up to or over 20 other students? If you truly believe this to be safe, maybe you should spend the rest of the winter bunking in Hill Hall. Ed, do you think it's safe to have your strictly required COVID-19 tests to be carried out in a university facility, shared by a food court and open store, and be performed by non-medical professionals? You're scientists, I'm sure you can look at the numbers and figure out a trend here. The more students you welcome back into this town, the more COVID looms over the largely older population of Laramie. I'd be leaving out a large part of the story if I didn't mention the city council's refusal to pass a mask mandate earlier this summer. But at least council shot down a mask mandate just because they're too cowardly to stand up to the loud and stupid science deniers who frequent their meetings. But Ed, you're a scientist and you and those in your administration understand full well the potential disaster you brought upon this town by continuing to open the university, and that is far more evil. Thank you, I yield my time.
President Seidel, would you want to respond to that?
I would like to respond to that, Sam. So, first of all, I appreciate your, your passion and I appreciate the points you're making. I will say, it is true that I am extremely science-oriented. I read professional journals as well as I've managed scientific policy at the federal level, and I'm having conversations with many universities, not only the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, that I want to point out is led by a National Academy member, a scientist at the chancellor level, another very distinguished scientist at the provost level, and many, many National Academy members and distinguished scientists there who have pioneered a lot of testing capabilities, and we are working closely with them. And we are also following the best practices as given by not just one university, but many across the country. And in particular, so for example, I have colleagues and friends at Johns Hopkins University, who you will certainly recognize as one of the most distinguished universities in the country with perhaps the largest and one of the most distinguished medical schools in the world. And they decided to go online, as maybe you're advocating. But in conversations with them, they said, we understand this virus, we have some of the best epidemiologists and scientists and social scientists and someone who are advising us, we think we could manage the campus, but we're in the city of Baltimore that has coronavirus everywhere. So, our ultimate decision was we couldn't keep it out of the campus. So, it depends a lot on the local conditions. We, of course, have a different environment here. It's a much cleaner environment. And while we won't have, we won't be coronavirus-free, I can promise you, we will take interventions as we did and already wants to, in fact, pause the entire university. And now with lessons learned and additional testing capabilities, we think we can manage the situation. And I'll just leave it at that. So, there are judgments here, but there's, I can assure you, they're very strongly scientifically generated.
Thank you, President. Any other questions from the public or comments from the public?
May I say something?
We'll come back to council in a moment.
I would like to say something.
Christopher, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Christopher Stratton. I'm actually the vice president of staff senate at the University of Wyoming. I am very happy that we have a fairly controlled scientific aspect on campus. I do want to ask some questions on the validity of the COVID app and the factor that it is voluntary and it's only a simple questionnaire. It doesn't really cover any means of dealing with anybody that is asymptomatic. I also have some concerns about the control of people on campus that are not students, that are walking their dogs and riding skateboards and definitely not following our mask mandate. I also want to bring to fact that most businesses downtown do not do testing even closely to what we do, and they also do not mandate masks if you go by Roxy's or any of the other bars on the weekend. It's a free-for-all and you definitely see COVID uptake coming higher and higher as you can, as we do our testing on campus. I do wonder if there is anything that the president could do to address those types of issues. I will yield the rest of my time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Christopher, President Seidel.
Thank you, Christopher. I'd be happy to respond just briefly to that, but of course, I think I've seen you on Zoom, so we may have more internal conversations. But I will say, I'm pretty confident that we have a very good system in place to manage the situation on the campus. However, we are going to be very nimble to finding holes in our programs, which in fact, we already, just last week, in fact, we had a meeting where we brought in additional three dozen staff that the vice presidents all offered up as among our, our very strong staff members in the university to have additional resources to better manage the situation. So, we're always looking for ways to improve what we're doing and to be driven by the data that we find. In terms of people on going downtown, I, too, have some concerns about this, and I would like very much to have a meeting with local businesses to say, look, we want to do the best we can to support the businesses. We would love to have a cooperation with you to best manage this so that we can stay open, so that we can continue to support the businesses. And so, we, I think that would be a very responsible thing to do. So, I would really be eager to have a conversation like that.
May I say something?
Taylor Norton?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Taylor Norton. I'm a concerned citizen of Laramie as well. Mr. President, you mentioned that you had a lot of students who were hesitant to come back to campus because of cost, and I would argue that it would have been a much more effective means to mitigate that cost and allow them to return to school by not requiring them to actually physically return to the campus, and yet you can, you actually continued to require that of your students, even in the midst of this pandemic, which is, has, as has been noted, continuing to spiral out of control in this county. And you mentioned that you have taken into account environmental factors, but you seem to have ignored the fact that this very city council has declined to enact a mask mandate, thus putting everyone in the city at greater risk, including the students that you were requiring to return to the city. What would you have to say to that?
So, Taylor, if it's Taylor, the name says Taylor there. So, Taylor, and thanks for the comment. A couple of things to say about that. So, the first thing is, we do have students that are taking classes online, and that's an offering that we will continue to make. In terms of the COVID spiraling out of control, I would say it is increasing and that is concerning us, but we are meeting literally daily with state and local health officials to monitor the situation, to make sure that we enforce best practices. And we do have indicators that say if, according to epidemiologists, if certain thresholds are reached, we should be very concerned and consider taking actions either to shut down parts or potentially all of the university going forward. And so, we will continue to, to monitor that. And if we got into a situation that we thought was unsafe, that is beyond where the health officials and our scientific guidance brings us, then we would, we would take actions to shut down or to go online or to go into extended pause, et cetera. So, and that may well happen. I can't say, I can't promise that we will stay open. But I would say, it is generally, I'd say, very strongly felt by our community that they want the university to be open and their educational offerings are better in person. And so, we're doing everything we can within safety reasons to keep it that way.
Maximus, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. President Seidel, thank you for taking questions from the public. You just mentioned about wanting to know the ground truth, and I was very encouraged by hearing that because I'm a firm believer that the right answers always start with asking the right questions. In order to ask the right questions, one has to be, or any entity, has to be situationally aware of their operating environment. I say all of this to say that there is a perception, and this is kind of an uncomfortable truth or perception, that the university is a distinct entity from the city and doesn't quite contribute as much as it should to the city. And to that point, just to bring up some issues, and you may have heard or not, that point one being, obviously, it's a land-grant institution, is exempt from property tax, and dust does not carry its own weight in order to provide the necessary taxes, and it occupies quite a few blocks within the city limit. So, you may have heard of that, and if there is any ideas that you may have, and I understand some of this stuff is up to the legislator and the governor, that you could contribute as a university more to the city. And on that point, it's point two, that was an issue, I think it actually transpired during your administration. The university uses city water to, for landscaping and irrigating the golf course, and recently they decided to drill wells. And the contract, I believe, is about five years at a tune of $1 million. And by doing so, they essentially would negate that revenue to the city. And the perception, again, and this could obviously become reality, is that the city would be, in exchange, forced to pass on that cost, that $200,000, to the residents, which they already suffer, again, perception, from very high city rates, water rates, I believe it's probably the highest in the state. And if you compare it to other communities across the nation, it's definitely very, very high. So, there is that. And then, the third point is really student housing that comes to mind. I've been to many institutions, and this is the first one where the freshmen are required to stay in the dorms. And we know that there's a pretty large budget for building more dorms, about $300 million. That could be in flux because of the pandemic. But nevertheless, there's been discussions about the sophomore village, where the university would require sophomore students to stay on campus, and that would have a devastating effect on the local economy, as well as potentially pretty significant impact on the local real estate values.
Maximus?
I'm wondering if you could address some of those, or just in general?
Could we have President Seidel answer the questions you've given? Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for those points. And so, and I recognize, in fact, I've had conversations about, I think, most of these, not so much about the very last point you made about sophomores. But but let me just say, first of all, that the university and the town, the city and the community more generally are all in this together. And so, you can, you can be assured that I will be extremely interested in making sure that our interests are aligned. I think they're very similar generally. Sometimes they're not exactly pointing in exactly the same direction, but we work hard and we will continue to work hard to do, to make sure that our interests are aligned. That's not always the case, but I would say, for example, around the tax status, it is true what you said. Of course, the university does bring a lot of vitality and educated people to the community and is responsible for, I think, Laramie being such a, you know, in part is responsible for Laramie being such a vibrant community. And I, so I, I promise you to work to find ways to make sure that we are even better aligned going forward, particularly around economic development, and thinking about the potential for growing the research park-like activities and growing new companies here, thinking about how our arts and humanities departments can help create, contribute to the creative economy. And then, on the tech side, maybe think about growing a more of a tech economy. I'm very, very interested in talking about those things. But of course, as you said, it depends a lot on what local interests are and capabilities. So, we'll have to have conversations and see where those conversations go. But that would be, is my instinct. On some of the other topics, for example, around the housing, where I went to college, actually, the College of William &amp; Mary in Virginia, in a little toy town of Williamsburg, Virginia, which some of you might have even visited, but it's a historically very, very important town, and it was once the capital of Virginia. We were required to live on campus as a freshman, and I found it to be extremely valuable in order to be, to develop a cohort of students and friends that are still close to me for my entire life. And so, that's, that's, I understand where that requirement comes from. I've not really been in discussions yet about where that might go ultimately. So, maybe just to cut the answer short, I'd say I'd be happy to talk about these, oh, the water issue. I say I'm very aware of this. We've already had at least one conversation. I've had conversation with the governor as well about this. And so, we're looking forward to sitting down and getting to the bottom of this and finding out the, what all the facts are on this thing and find out the best way forward. So, I just want to say that I appreciate all your points, and we'll be looking at all of them going forward.
Are there any other questions from the public or comments? Seeing none, President, we have taken an hour of your time. We appreciate the time you've spent with us. If you, if you wouldn't mind, we'll wrap up with having comments and then final thoughts from you before we go to Riley Talamantes, the ASUW president. But counsel, if you have any final thoughts, would you please indicate and let us know, and then we'll give a chance for our president to wrap up? Yes, Counselor Pierce?
I just want to say thanks for coming tonight and really looking forward to some new and renewed partnerships.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Economic development is, is center in most of our hearts, as well as the COVID issue. I think we've got some real opportunity to, to, you know, work together on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council? All right, again, thank you, President, for everything that you've brought to us. It's been a pleasure working with you thus far. You've done a lot in a few short months. Go ahead and give us some closing thoughts if you'd like, and then we'll go to the ASUW president.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for your time. I've taken an hour of your time tonight as well, so it's been a pleasure to do that. And I hope to have quite a long and productive relationship with you, both professionally and personally. I mean, I'm your neighbor, so I look forward to getting to know you all. And let's work together to do great things. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you again. All right. City manager, did you have an introduction for Riley or?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
As you know, ASUW elects a president each year. I think Riley's been seated for a couple of months now and has feet well under her. So, we're eager to have her with us today.
Okay. Riley, the floor is yours. Welcome to this work session.
Yeah, thank you for having me. And my apologies, I think my presentation will be maybe a And my apologies, I think my presentation will be maybe a bit shorter than President Seidel's, just because I think a lot of the information that he covered is something that I wanted to communicate you all, communicate to you all with too, just about some of the testing measures that have been happening at the university and how we've been able to have students comply with those. But I think one thing that I would kind of like to address with you all tonight, which is why it may be a bit short, is student engagement amidst COVID, because that kind of really has shifted the way that not just ASUW, but other entities on campus have found other ways for students to be engaging in a safe manner during their college experience. And so this year, a majority of student events will be hosted through virtual opportunities and then smaller socially distanced events. And so many of our student organizations are still meeting over Zoom. We've gotten a pretty good gauge that there are still students who are engaging in those opportunities. Many events tailored, you know, are tailored toward Zoom now and will continue online engagement, especially with some of the bigger events, such as homecoming. Just recently, our fraternity and sorority life also just wrapped up their recruitment, which was also 100% online. So congratulations for them for, you know, pulling it off. But we do have some other campus entities that are still trying to offer some engagement opportunities for students that they would normally get on campus. And now that those have been kind of limited in their capacity, they've all really moved towards online. And with ASUW specifically, our student senate has been brainstorming a lot of different ideas that we can get students engaged and engage safely. And so we hope to, you know, talk to some of the right people for setting up various ideas that we have kind of brainstormed in a few sessions last week. One idea that some of us really liked and we thought that could definitely happen is working with some local businesses and some of the food trucks to do a food truck crawl, where students and any member really of the community can go to any part of the university and be able to get food through those kinds of opportunities. And so really, we're trying to shift our engagement towards ones that are either virtual or online or in person and socially distanced and make sure that it's still safe for all the folks who are coming on campus. And so I think the last thing that I'll posit with you all is one task that we really wanted to accomplish this year within ASUW was there being more connection and collaboration with community members, businesses, and organizations. And so, you know, students, I think, always, whenever they're in school, are really just itching to do something. They're wanting to get engaged in various ways, or even just stay engaged with their community and really giving back to a community that, you know, they may live here for four years, or they may settle here because Laramie is just such a wonderful place. And so I would highly encourage any community members to, you know, reach out to the student population for any kind of volunteering opportunities for organizations that, you know, give back to the community, partnering with various student organizations, with some of the businesses to do fundraisers to, or to, you know, just raise awareness about particular issues. But I think one thing that we all can, you know, strive for this year is really trying to build connection with the folks within our community and collaborating with them so that they can, we can each benefit in our own and very unique way. And so that is all I've kind of brought to you all this evening. So if you all have any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to receive them at this time.
Thank you, Riley. So let's start again with the city council, with any questions for Riley. Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. Riley, thanks for being with us tonight. Question concerning what President Seidel talked about is the COVID concern among students and parties and what we've seen now recently at the law school. In your role, what do you see in trying to prevent any kind of outbreak on campus and emphasizing to students how important it is to adhere to the state orders about gatherings and so on? From, you know, you talked about having some trucks on campus for food and things of that order, but the real emphasis is to make sure that we don't have lots of students engaging in, you know, weekend parties and that kind of thing that could jeopardize the university continuing on this fall.
Yeah, absolutely. And so we've, at ASUW, have been trying to work with some folks in student affairs to really hammer in the message about the importance of following specific health and safety guidelines that not just the CDC, but the Wyoming Department of Health has also put out. And so I will be tomorrow meeting with institutional marketing, some folks who are, some leaders in the fraternity and sorority life community, and some other student organizations around campus to talk about a marketing campaign where we can really hammer into the message of the students that, you know, these private parties, if you will, that they attend, or, you know, not really caring that much about some of the orders they've been given from our COVID contact tracers, really do just have an impact outside of themselves. And I think the College of Law provides a really good example for that. I would hope that those students, because of the closure that the camp, that that particular college had to take, really motivates students to continue following a lot of the orders that they have been given to by the university. And so I think what ASUW, our partners, and some other student leaders are really trying to accomplish is being leaders in a time when it is difficult and making sure that, you know, we're being the best model for students in this time.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question there.
I looked three times, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Staudtler.
Thank you, Riley. You just mentioned COVID contact tracers, and I guess I'm not totally familiar. Is that a requirement at the university? And can you explain a little bit about how that works?
Yeah, of course. So President Seidel, with the testing program that he has set forth at the university, anytime a student tests positive, a contact tracer, which is just a student employee, will call that student and let them know that they have been in contact with someone who has COVID, or that they've tested positive for COVID. So these contact tracers really are the way that the university has been collecting information and names of students who should be under quarantine orders. And let's see, I think I've kind of explained just a little bit as to how it works. It is a way that the university really is able to track to see which students have come in contact with people who could test positive or people who do test positive. So I don't know, Councilman Staudler, if you have any other, you know, questions or clarifications, but I'd be happy to give them if that wasn't sufficient. My apologies.
Didn't know about it, so thank you.
Other questions for Riley? Riley, would you be willing to accept questions from the public also?
Yeah, of course.
Now, the public, we would ask you to ask questions directed to the, to Riley, the ASUW president, things that she has responsibility to do so that she can, now, obviously, the university and the ASUW work together, but let's try to focus on what they can do and how they can work with the student body in accomplishing things this year at the University of Wyoming. So, public, go ahead, if you would just indicate by unmuting, and we'll recognize you for, again, three minutes.
May I say something?
Yes.
Sorry, I changed my name. Let me fix that.
Yeah, could you give us your name? Oh, Taylor, go ahead.
I, I just want to say something real quick. I think, Riley, you're doing a great job so far, and I commend you for everything you've done up to this point. And I hope you don't get discouraged if, and hopefully not, when people try to blame you for any outbreaks that happen. I know there's a lot of responsibility that you have, but there aren't a lot of things that you can do to control the entire student population. And I don't actually have a question for you. I just want you to know that I'm pulling for you.
Okay, Taylor Norton, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Taylor. Riley, I, that was a comment. Would you want to say anything?
Other than, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Any other, any other questions or comments from the public? Yes. Just, let's see, Jessica, right?
Yeah, hi, Jessica Nada. Hi, Riley, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. I just have a quick question for you. Could you please tell us how the student morale is at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that the student morale, I don't know if there's a complete answer to that question that would encompass all of the students. I think student morale right now, if I'm being honest, is a little bit low. But, you know, I think that's just because of the circumstances that we're in, some of the policies that students have to follow that, you know, we wouldn't normally encounter in a regular year. However, I have really appreciated a lot of the opportunities that departments and organizations on campus have really provided for students so that they can still, you know, have a normal college experience in a time that just does not feel normal. And so I hope that, you know, some of the work that we've been doing at ASUW, as well as just some of the other work from campus entities, has really been able to help student morale in a time that does feel kind of low.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? I don't see any others, so we're going to go back to the council for any final comments for this work session. Counselor Doherty.
I'd just like to thank Riley and thanks for being the president of student government. I think it's really helpful, and it's unfortunate that we're not getting to mix with the community right now, but I, I think students are very resilient and that it's a good opportunity to, to find new ways to do things. So good luck with it. Thank you.
Other comments from the council? Counselor Pierce.
Yeah, Riley, thanks for your work.
All right, also, I would, I'm not seeing any other hands, but I would like to, let's see, we have one. Oh, yes, Counselor Weaver, welcome.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Mayor Shumway. I've been here lurking in the background for a little while, but
Okay.
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask the ASUW president a question, and I'm sorry if this is territory that was covered somewhere else. My question is this, we still have a little bit of time for census completion, and there's been a lot of concern about participation for University of Wyoming students in responding to the census as residents of Laramie. And of course, all of the, everything that's happened in the census process has not helped us in in that effort. I wonder if you might speak a little bit to what might be in discussion regarding the census participation while we have still some time for folks to complete that and what the ASUW has heard or might be participating in or partnering in, in an effort to get that finished. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Weaver. Go ahead, Riley.
Yeah, of course. So unfortunately, when COVID had hit in March, that had deteriorated a lot of our strategies for having students fill out the census. However, over the summertime, we have been trying to work with residence life and dining to make sure that students who, you know, are in the residence halls, in the apartments, basically any other part of campus that we can be able to reach them, are still filling out the census. And we do plan on having some sort of last push at the end of the month, too, so students are informed about, you know, the importance of the census, but also making sure that they're filling out those, you know, particular things for the census.
Good to hear, good to hear. That's great, and I hope that you guys have a lot of success with that last push, because of course, it would be terrible to miss an opportunity for when so many students are back and on campus, which is a critical time. So I'm really glad to hear that. Thank you for that. And again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all from me.
Thank you, Counselor Weaver. Any other hands? I, as all of you probably sense, there is a great concern, not only from Riley, but also from President Seidel, that we, that we do our part as a community to make sure that we keep our community safe, especially with this COVID situation. And I'm sure that there's a temptation from the president of the university and probably from the ASUW to tell the city of Laramie that we should mandate a mask requirement. Now, that's not your responsibility, that's the governor and the county and state health officials. And as much as we would like to step, step maybe over our, into our roles and mandate things that are not our responsibilities, I think it's something that we can work together. And we feel like that, you know, that with the conversations that President Seidel has had with the governor, with the conversations we've had with our county health officials, I think that we can come together and 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 do the very best job we can to keep not only the city of Laramie as a safe environment, but also work with the university on keeping the university safe during this time of crisis with the COVID situation. So that's just a comment. We appreciate, again, the time that Riley and President Seidel have spent with us. And so with that, I think we're going to, Riley, did you want to make final comments? I gave that to the president. Would you like to make a final comment before we wrap up this work session?
Sure, I really appreciate the time to be here. And, you know, if you all ever have any questions or concerns in regards to students, maybe even just some ideas for partnerships and ways that we can kind of hammer in the message about following particular safety guidelines, I'm more than happy to sit down and speak with you all about that, too. So thank you so much for letting me speak tonight and the opportunity, you know, to collaborate with the university. So thank you.
Okay, great. And again, thank you for the partnership. All right, I think we are, we have concluded our work session. We, again, thank all those that have participated, and we're going to go into some boring stuff now, so you're certainly welcome to move on. And I think rather, counsel, you don't want to take a break. I think we can just go right through this. We've just got a few things to wrap up, correct? Okay. Anyway, thank you for coming. Counsel, we're going to do council updates. We're going to start with those that are on the Zoom. We're going to go in this order. We're going to start with Counselor Pierce, no, no, Counselor Pierce is here, with Counselor Weaver, and then Counselor Schuster, and then Counselor Harrington. So Counselor Weaver, council updates.
I have none currently, Mr. Mayor. I will say this, I inquired with our city natural resources, contacted Aaron Parkin, and asked about the situation with Rocky Mountain Power regarding the recent project proposal out at the Monolith Ranch. We haven't heard anything, we hadn't heard anything as of when I checked with him last. I don't know that there's any other update about that. That's just something I followed up on independently to see if we had any news. Not yet, but I anticipate we'll probably hear something before too long. That's the closest thing I have to an update at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Schuster.
Yes, the only thing, I went to a historical railroad depot meeting because of our holiday. We didn't have a, a, a planning commission. They are hopeful that they can start having some renters return to the building. They've had a couple, they have all met county guidelines on how many people can be there and mask, but that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schuster. Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Vitality Committee, that also serves as the DDA board, but in this case was the Economic Vitality Committee, they met last week. They discussed in detail the results of their downtown halls, is what they were calling them, but they but they hosted a series of in-person and also Zoom town halls with the kind of specific intention of what does, what does this look like for Laramie businesses with the cancellation of football season? And sort of up in the air about students returning. So, they, they discussed kind of several things around that, but I think maybe the most significant thing, to save you all the time of going through each, the most significant thing is really a more drawn-out shop local campaign this fall. I think early in the pandemic, we saw considerable effort by the community to, to really support your neighbors. And I, I think this all revolved back to the idea that we still need to be doing that. Businesses are still hurting, still far below their, their typical income levels, sales levels. So, I think you'll see probably some, some marketing materials roll out for that as well as far more effort put into Small Business Saturday in November. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Harrington. Counselor Pierce?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Counselor Doherty? Vice Mayor Gabriel?
Tended the Auburn County Tourism Board meeting yesterday along with the Recreation Board, our quarterly meeting. No significant action there. And then Counselor Harrington and I appeared before the lab school the other day for Q and A on different activities that the city council was involved with. It was a very interesting discussion for about an hour. They wanted to know all about city council and our philosophy about different things. And so, that was a eye-opening experience indeed. That's it.
Right. I know Counselor Pierce also did a meeting with the lab school. Counselor Doherty, you did also. I know when they asked me what my favorite thing was to do as mayor, my response was to talk to fifth graders. So...
I thought it'd be writing the homecoming.
With the vice mayor, yeah. Counselor Stalder?
Thank you, Mayor. I have the airport board meeting this Friday, and so I don't really have any new updates since last time, but the terminal construction is going really well. There are really cool ideas. I think it's gonna be a pretty neat gateway to the community. And I can wait for Counselor McKinney to make his updates, but I was wondering if Janine could give us an update on the situation on Harrison Street with the asphalt milling.
I'd be happy to. I will tell you that I don't have any new information as of today beyond what I sent to you all Friday. And I'm looking to see if Brooks is up here or Malia. They might know more than I do as of this moment. Malia, I see you there. I don't see Brooks. Do you know anything about Harrison today that's changed? I'll just reiterate while she's getting off mute. The goal was that we would have the road surface with the sort of finer cap material laid. Tomorrow, I believe they deliver and we thought we'd be done, maybe tomorrow, possibly Thursday. So, I haven't heard that we're off schedule, so I'm gonna assume we're on schedule with that so far. And Malia might not be there.
She's not, she's still muted, so. That's, that's the latest I've heard also. I know we get lots of calls.
Yeah, I'd be happy to get an update for you in the morning first thing and send it out. That would be helpful.
Sorry to hijack the update session with a question.
That's good, that's, that's an update. Let me just say this.
Mute? Hello? Hello?
Then we'll go to council comments.
Sorry.
Malia, did you want to bring up something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry I couldn't unmute. I, I wanted to, Mayor and Janine, what I heard is they're looking for small millings to help clean up the area and that's, they're having to wait because they're having a hard time getting that. But there's, their plan was to do everything by the, by this week, by Friday.
By Friday now, okay. Thank you, Malia. Okay, let me give you where we are with the, the community service on gathering food for Interfaith. There is a crew that will be, today was our last day. And there'll be a crew going in to, with pickups to transport everything over to Interfaith. Interfaith has agreed to be there with people to help unload today. I think it's been a good exercise. I, I know that we reached out to quite a few people. I sent out a blast today trying to bolster the chances for Ward Two to, to pack in a few more groceries for Interfaith. But anyway, it's been, it's been a great opportunity to show, you know, our, how the concern is that we all have for the community, especially those that are affected economically. And so, I, I appreciate the impetus that came, and I don't know who it came from on the council, but I think it came from a number of the members of the council. I appreciate stepping, you know, back and saying, what's our real role? Our real role is to serve. And so, I, again, maybe that's council comments, but anyway, thank you for all of those that were involved in initiating this and putting it together. I know many of you, I don't want to name one or two because I know more than one or two have been involved. And we still will probably be involved tomorrow. I have pickups going to each of the fire stations tomorrow, between five and six. If any of the council want to go there and help load, certainly welcome to and help unload at Interfaith. So, anyway, let's start with Counselor McKinney. Any comments you have? Counselor Stalder comments? Vice Mayor, I made my comments out of turn. Counselor Doherty, Counselor Pierce?
You know, other than what we talked about a little bit yesterday or over the weekend regarding the youth council, I think, I think we might want to consider, you know, expanding our youth council to, to potentially that fifth and sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade population and, and think about different ways to engage those students. And maybe if it, maybe if it means we go, you know, three council members to one of the schools once a month or something, you know, and just talking with them about, about policymaking and civics. Anyway, just, just a couple ideas. I think, I don't know if we need a work session or I, I don't know, but I, I'd sure like to engage other council members and come up with some ideas related to that. The experience we had was amazing, at least for me anyway, and kids were very bright and really on task. And they wanted to, they wanted to know a lot of stuff. And I'm like, man, you are informed. I mean, they were good.
Counselor Pierce, next week, you, you can certainly bring that up for a topic of discussion, you know, for a work session. But I, I, I agree with you. There's some brilliant students from all grades, but I know we have to say we'll start at a certain grade and maybe middle school and high school is where we need to go. And I think right now, fifth grade is still middle school, right?
I don't know. I don't know how.
I think.
Fifth, sixth, and s-
Fifth is in elementary still.
Fifth and then sixth is middle?
Yeah, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Okay, well, anyway, we'll, we'll reach out to, we'll reach out to, we'll, we'll have that discussion. Okay, Counselor Weaver, comments?
It was an interesting work session tonight, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the full range of questions that we heard. I think we also heard a, a couple of other things that continue to pop up that need to be added to the, the list of items that need myth busting, Mr. Mayor. I have heard about the high cost, the comparative high cost of Laramie's water services many, many times over the course of my six years on council. And I've also seen information from the state of Wyoming and other reliable sources, though that's just not an accurate characterization. But we'll get some information together to provide accuracy about, about the water rates and how those are developed. I'm sure the city manager is able to do that, and I've been in some contact with her to get the most up-to-date information so that we can share that with our Laramie residents and our partners anywhere else that might be interested in the comparative cost of our water rates and how they stack up to other municipalities in Wyoming. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster? Counselor Harrington?
Just real quick, I spoke with Sarah Reese regarding the youth council today. So, when, when Jane brought that up, I think there was an interest from her in Counselor Weaver and you, Mr. Mayor, and myself having a conversation, discussing kind of what the youth council will look like when it reforms. So, I will be sending you guys an email regarding that. Just set that up.
Right, good. I'm sorry, Counselor Schuster, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Yes?
Delayed comment, sorry. I did get an email from a constituent asking about ward meetings, and I wonder if there's gonna be any effort by council to start doing the ward meetings, maybe over Zoom or anything like that, since next week is the fifth Tuesday?
Right now, we have not planned for that.
Council had voted a couple weeks ago, Counselor Stalder, to cancel the ward meetings for September.
Okay.
The next set of ward meetings is scheduled for December 29th. So, if it's the council's wish to go ahead and do, hold Zoom meetings at each location, you know, we could certainly set that up. So, it's something for the council to decide between now and, and then what you'd like to do.
Thank you. I forgot about that, but just wondering since someone reached out about it.
I, Mayor threw you, I, I do have a notice prepared to go out to the public tomorrow morning just to remind them that they can always email or write, handwrite comments for the council. Of course, they can email council@cityoflermy.org to send it to everyone. If they have written comments, they can either drop them in the utility box outside, the black box, or they can come into City Hall and just let me know that they're here and we'll come out and get it and disseminate to everyone.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Counselor Pierce?
You know, and this is a comment. I just want to piggyback on Counselor Weaver's comment related to that myth busting. I think it's kind of a good way to, to, to phrase that because there's a lot of very specific details when it comes to water rates in terms of, you know, the shape of our assets, our pipes, our water compared to, to other communities. All these things are taken into account, right? And, and the city of Laramie was in a very bad situation. We had pipes breaking all the time. And, you know, we had to make some movement on this. And, and other communities may have all along taken very good care of their assets, their, their water, pipes and waterworks. And, you know, we were, we were a number of years ago, probably 10 or 15 years ago, forced to take a real hard look at that. So, you know, every community is different and every situation is different. And I think we need to remember, remember that when we, when we think about our, our rates compared to others' community, other communities, because we're not comparing apples to apples. You know, it's a, it's a very detailed and process that, that what we have to go through and what we hire people to, to do for us. So...
It's a good reminder. Water is an enterprise fund and we cannot use that as a revenue. We cannot make money. It's a break even. Whatever the cost is, that's what the ratepayers pay, so.
Right.
Okay. I think we've completed council comments and council updates. Now, it's time for us to have the agenda review. We'll not have that tonight. It's, it's not ready. You'll be getting that, you know, you'll be getting that in the next couple of days. And if you have any questions, be sure to get ahold of the city clerk on that, and then we'll go over it again before we, at six o'clock before we have the agenda for the regular city council meeting. Now, we're at public comments. They're gonna, we, I think we've covered all those that have signed up for public comments, but we certainly, this is another chance for anyone that wants to speak on any topic that they want to. We'll start with those in council chambers. Anyone in council chambers wants to make public comments again or, or for this final public comment period? If so, you, you'll have three minutes again.
I do.
Yes, Jessica, come on up.
Thank you again for allowing time to make a few comments for myself tonight. Thank you. I have a question actually. Is, has a representative of the Laramie Boomerang been in attendance tonight?
He was on Zoom.
He was earlier.
And who was that?
I think it was Cat.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and Jessica, and for everyone else, this, this is a good chance for you to ask questions, but typically, we don't do back and forth for public comments, just, just so it doesn't become that kind of a debate or, you know, that. But, good, good question. And, and the Boomerang has always been either taking the recordings and preparing comments or else being here in person or being on Zoom. And so, they've, I've never known, have a meeting where they, where they didn't participate. Okay, anyone else in, in the chambers? Let's go to those that are on the phone. Anyone on the phone that would like to make public comments?
Caleb Hind?
Caleb, welcome.
Hello, Honorable City Council. This is Caleb Hind. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, awesome, cool. So, I've been doing a, doing a bunch of campaigning, and one of the things that I've been blessed to, blessed to do is to talk to a lot of businesses in, in Laramie, Wyoming. And I know you guys are always looking for, looking for things to improve on. And one of those is, you know, getting back on, on emails. And so, I was talking and she wanted me to represent her tonight, but she had asked a couple questions to the, the staff that had never really been answered, one of which, and I, I do, I know, know it's not for questions and stuff, so more, more of a comment. But, one question on, on the fence on the west side of the Freedom Bridge, or what some people call the Harney Bridge, there was promised a fence to help with noise from cars. And some of those folks are, are feeling as though they're being forgotten about on that side. And so, don't know if you guys have addressed that or if it didn't hit the budget or, or, or something, but we have some people over there that are very concerned about not getting their fence in. That's one of the things. And then another thing is, another person is parking around downtown Laramie being more enforced. There's, there's a couple places to the north, north parking lot, that still have trailers and old, old vehicles that haven't been addressed yet. And the last thing that I, I've kind of heard over and over and over is on the Holly Hawk Commons, numerous people did not get anything from any business council talking about the stuff, and they were very, very upset to see that the council had, or not council, the, the staff had already bought the tables before asking the public elected council. Anyways, that is something that I've heard multiple times. I thought it would be good to bring it up tonight as you guys are always looking for improvement. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hind. Any others?
Christopher Stratton?
Christopher, go ahead.
Hello, thank you, Honorable Mayor again. In response to the empty dream field of the Cirrus Park, I, I would like to again state that the lack of fiber and capability of good internet service for the town is a, a major item in making that dream come to fruition. I would love to see council doing something about our current internet situation in town because we only have two providers and really, they don't offer anything that would be what we would need for a technology park or the capabilities of those in a technology park. The lack of willingness of the city of Laramie to allow businesses to actually do business is probably the other big growth problem that you have with that lovely empty field that's being used as a dog walk and has for many, many years. I would also like to state that, you know, it would be very interesting if you guys could look into helping the small businesses with the money that was obtained by the city for COVID-19. It would be nicer to see testing and capabilities being delivered to small businesses and those that work in the- and those that work in those small businesses that could possibly help in maintaining the situation of the massive increase in COVID-19 since the introduction of walking around and drinking in public, and then the reintroduction of students to campus. Those are all good, good points that should just be looked into. Thank you very much for my time, and hope that maybe some of those types of things could be worked on by council to provide a better space for Laramie, Wyoming.
Thank you, Christopher.
Maximus?
Maximus, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm both encouraged and surprised that there is interest by the council to do some myth busting with respect to the city water rates, and we'd encourage a true comparative analysis study where we just don't talk about the variable costs. We talk about fixed costs and ultimately are able to compare what a typical household in Laramie pays for water compared to other communities across the state and hopefully across the nation. Anecdotally, based on what I know, it's not favorable. So I really would like to see that study done and the results explained to the public, because one of the main topics of discontent I've heard ever since being in Laramie is the city water rates. So that would be very helpful to the public. And speaking of the enterprise fund, really understand how it works. If there's a surplus, where does the surplus go? Does it go back to the public in terms of reduced water rates? Or it's spent in other ways? So that would be very, very helpful, and thank you, council, for encouraging that study. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Maximus. Anyone else?
See no other hands, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for participating in the public comment period. That concludes our agenda for today, and so this work session is adjourned.